So she's got, um, she's got, um, one seventy minutes, it's just ill dangerous.
Got it, okay, um. I, I thought when I say that, I saw, I saw like two minutes.
We should open the paragraph on that should be clear due to mechanical difficulties, you know, there's, there's well, this is the best I can do.
Right. Alright, so what can we do?
I think you update if you want.
Well, actually, we got, we got, we do, we have this bond, this, uh, try five times.
To, oh, release?
No, it's just extension.
Oh, okay. How big is the bond?
Let me see here, is it saying, should say?
I wonder if it's actually not one.
Um, ta-da, let's see.
The exact is essentially a performance guarantee, is that?
Yeah, and so the bank will put them in place for a certain number of months, and so we have to keep on top of them to make sure they keep extending it, otherwise we will end up.
Right, right.
So I think that is that one for Eaton Circle?
Right now, it says sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty and thirteen.
All they need now is street acceptance and a few repairs before they get to street acceptance, so there should be fairly.
Yeah, this is, um.
Do we walk on street acceptance, um, or is it all just department, you know, like TBW?
The select board, who's, that does a street.
But, but aside from approving, but do they, are they physically, is someone on the select board physically walk to do that inspection with the other?
No, no, so I've been inspected, um, GM two inspected, we give this a report, um, because they've been, you know, doing the, the construction inspection throughout, um, and also the town engineer sees it.
So this is just three copies of the same one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, do we want, do we need to make a motion to sign?
I think you just sign it, um, so we didn't put that in the motions, I.
Yeah, I think we just sign it.
Yeah, I don't think you have to approve the extension, because they have to extend it.
Well, there's only two of us here to sign it, you're like.
Um, she can have her mind up in, or actually, it can be any of the members.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be someone who attends tonight. But, but, you know, we get a report from them, we have a hearing, the select board has a hearing, they give us two sets of plans, one is street acceptance plan, one is an asphalt plan, GM two will also review the asphalt.
So when I was, I was reading everything wrote in, in the McIntyre thing, um, but I started thinking about that for a while about, because I remember clearly that I, I, I questioned the guy and they went back and they redid, but whether they redid their drainage scalp because of what, that, that, or something else, I don't really remember it, but I know they redid the drainage scalp.
There are two versions of it.
On McIntyre, right.
Yeah, there's.
So, so whether, so if it occurred to me, okay, you'll appreciate this, from a practical point of view, to say that the subject systems add water to the system and have them put in roof drains to compensate for it, that makes no sense, because, because the subject system is actually doing the exact same thing.
Right, right.
So what, you're compensating for something that doesn't need to be compensated for.
I agree.
Because basically, a subject system cleans the water, puts it back in the aquifer, and the, the roof drain takes clean water and puts it in the aquifer, so, so, I mean, what the more I thought about it, what's that, well, wait a minute.
Unless you had a roof or something.
Well, no, just, you know, I know, you know, the practicality has slipped away, you know, so, more I thought about it.
Sometimes for like, for those lots where it's right, like, there is definitely a, a flow problem onto a neighbor, like, to help mitigate that, like, on Shale Lane, that one house that became kind of problematic, they had a huge roof, and they didn't have any drains connected. So there was more flow going off the site than needed to be, but you're right, for the population, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it doesn't really matter, because it's being recharged, it's not a service floor, it's not a catchment area.
Right.
However, having said that, if it was a place like, uh, well, like you were just talking about Dave, where the groundwater is only a foot down, and even though they build the system way out, they could locally add to the height of that groundwater if they put a lot into that system. But it would be very local, it would not be something that would necessarily affect the neighbor, but it would be local, because essentially, you know, the ground is huge, so it's not. Oh, yeah, David. You leave a paper. Thank you. Yeah, so, um, I know that that was a consideration, and that McIntyre, the drainage count, the drainage count was a book, well, a inch thick.
Debbie scanned it, yeah, she scanned it and sent it to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, did she do both versions? She definitely did the, the approved version.
See, the second version was after we had that discussion.
But he, he said that it didn't take into account, so.
Well, whether they wrote down that it took into account, or whether they just said, okay, these are the, these flows are gonna be contritigatory, because why else change it? Because what they did is they, and, but that was slightly thinking, because what they did is they went and put roof drains on all the, on three of those houses up there.
I mean, we often get a second drainage report, because there are usually corrections that need to be made, so, at least, but, but yeah, maybe that was one of the.
Yeah, it might have just been a contributing factor, but, but it did happen after we had that one, because I, I spent, I spent about three hours with that, with reading that whole thing, this D, because the water was gonna be such a problem on that end of McIntyre. So, um, um, and what I asked him questions, he did not have good answers, and then he said, well, we're gonna have to redo this, and so forth and so on, but that was one of the things I brought up, so, but I never followed up to see if he put it in the.
Isn't that, McIntyre is a subdivision that gets a lot of water flowing onto the drains, right?
Yeah, well, we had, we had a huge storm, but that was just being built, and all of the catch basins were raised up. And so the water didn't go in them, and it came down, and the river came up, and flooded that whole street, and wet a one hour street, had four feet of water in the garage.
He's like, continue.
We don't have enough members to, to not use one, so we are not gonna have.
An ex-official in the town.
Let's throw him in, September fifth, yeah.
Geez, I was gonna use my rock salt analogy again. Yeah. Is that number?
I like it.
You picked up one, you were exactly where I was talking.
Yeah.
Okay, see you in one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, oh, Jeremiah is back in.
It took me a few minutes, because I had emails on a bunch of them that, when they were signed in the fee, so I was trying to send out an email through my, but as I put some of them back, they were not readable.
Yeah.
Yeah, so called Joey Reynolds.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably still get a few, so.
I'm sure.
We can tell them.
And so the way, we have to wait until eight, right, to do, to do the, yeah, I just.
And then the other one, it's eight fifteen, we have to wait.
Yeah, the other one's eight, yeah, okay.
Well, we cannot have.
Well, this one says eight thirty, right? Oh, no, that's to, continue to, sorry.
Next time we'll bring a gurgles boy, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, someone will have to.
Bring a frisbee or something. Go long.
So I dated today, so, yeah.
Yeah, a couple ten inch ones down the park lot or something, yeah, wake up the neighbors. That sounded.
Do you want me to just do this monkey?
Sure.
Uh, wait, oh, wait, oh.
Sorry.
Jeremiah, can you hear?
Yes.
Oh, great. Doing updates.
Just trying to keep everybody from hearing the gurgling baby.
Yes, it's only us, so we love babies.
She'll be memorialized on North岸 forever.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Debbie puts in the gurgling noise in the minutes, Debbie. There you go. There you go.
Right on cue.
Yep.
Um, so just a few updates, um, the school committee meeting on August twenty ninth is actually gonna be in person and not only virtual, Stop Up They got in touch to say, um, that they are planning on having that one in person, they'll be at Stop Up, it's gonna be virtual, but for that night, it's gonna be in person, we're more than welcome to participate virtually if that is the preference.
For meeting.
Um, they, I think they need in the, do they still think that is a starting point?
Yeah.
Um.
I, I'll find out, because I have a list of each, and they.
Maybe sometimes they're in the cafeteria.
I'll just give them the location, and I'll let everyone know, um, so I realized we may have had a couple members who were planning on calling in for that, which is fine, except we didn't definitely do that, but, um, that they wanted to let us know with you, so. Um, I'll prepare a presentation for that, um, just to explain the whole MBTA communities, you know, what we're doing and why. Um, we did talk about, um, scheduling some public meetings to discuss the MBTA community's issue following that school committee meeting.
What do you, I know, um, are we just letting the school, do they know about this, or, or are we looking for very specific input from them?
Well, I think you guys were reasoning that letting them know about it first, and seeing if they would, were in agreement with this approach.
Well, because I think that the only, I think that the, uh, questions that they, I mean, I, if you want to be, I think the questions they're gonna ask is, is, uh, well, first of all, because the site we're gonna use already exists, we don't have to try to project what it's gonna do to school in Rome.
Right.
So I think that's gonna be the question, I mean, I kind of want to back down school in Rome, and we're gonna say, well, you already got the kids that, you know, we, we're using an existing thing, so you've already got those kids, if you, if they go into school now, you got them, so you're really not gonna have any real.
So there's no future in it, though, for them to protect?
Well, that's, that's basically, I think, what, what I'm getting at.
Okay.
To saying that it's important to be, to, for people that, because this is an already developed site, the likelihood is lower that it would be redeveloped, but if you're signing on it, then there's always a possibility that, that owners could say, yeah, we do wanna redevelop it, and, and if it does get redeveloped, it has to be in accordance with, um, or at least have the option of, the, the, kids can't be restricted from that site ever again.
Right, right.
So unless it's not a choice of the person who wants to develop it, so we do have to keep in mind that that is a possibility, it, it may be a very unlikely possibility.
Well, we kind of, we kind of did a, a roundabout approach to restricting it by making it all as many same one bedroom and two bedrooms as we could, they tried to limit, you know, how many kids, you know.
Well, that's Edgewood, I think for Martin's Landing, they wanted to do one and two because it's targeted to seniors, so.
That's what I'm saying, so there's a very, the very way that there was approved limits the number of kids.
Right, that does, but if it works to be a redevelopment, which I don't think is likely, but it could happen.
You think they could go and start combining units and make one, two units in a one unit, then have a four bedroom home?
It could, but they're not, yeah, they're, as far as all the ones we're doing right now, and the way the pro forma's work out, you don't wanna do more than two bedrooms.
Well, that's what I'm gonna say, is I don't know that, that these days, that these days, that people are having so many kids, I mean, I came up with a family of nine kids. Don't see many nine kid families in neighborhoods, and I went to a family with nine kids, so there's, there's, uh, that's, you know, a lot, and, and, um.
Seven.
People just don't see it anymore. But who do you know?
Three to a room.
Who do you, yes, who do you know?
One bathroom, too.
Who do you know of your kids, or my, my kids, or any of those kids that have more than just two kids?
Yeah, it's, it's less, I mean, because it's so expensive, to be honest, right, you know, that's what it is, I don't think our parents could have as many nowadays, or any parent could, I don't know how people do.
Yeah.
Right, to other parents here, isn't it like crazy, expensive?
Oh, God.
Yeah.
So again, I just wanna make sure, like, you guys had suggested that we need a school committee, so I just wanna make sure you, you still think that's a good idea.
Well, I, what I was trying to do, flesh out some of the questions, like.
Yeah, like, so that's, so that it's productive, and that, like you said, if it was one of these things where we're going into this new area, and we need you guys to figure out how many.
Like, what do you wanna know?
Like, that's roll up your sleeves time, but like, here, it's more like, this is, it's more just to let them know and assure them that there are some existing conditions in place that, or situation that, like, there shouldn't be big differences, and just to get their.
They're not gonna be with forty, forty-five, or fifty kids next year.
I mean, they might, they might not completely agree, but I mean, that's, that's why they're.
Is that what it is that we're doing, just in the sense that, you know, there are voters, and there are a board committee, and, you know, we need to make sure they understand what the approach is and why, um, and I will also mention that, you know, this is a town meeting decision, and if it didn't pass a town meeting, then we would have to come up with something else. And then we might have to figure out, looking at other areas, but this is the most conservative possible approach we can take right now, so I, I don't anticipate that it would be a controversial meeting, I just think that you had wanted to get the school committee on board with the approach first, before we started to talk to them.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to know that, you know, I, rather than everybody sitting there looking at each other, I wanted to kind of direct the conversation, you know, get an idea of where we're going with it, you know.
Do we have diagrams, you know, just to show them, this is, these are the areas that would be impacted, I mean, are we showing them anything? Okay.
Like I was gonna do, I'm trying to just say, this is the history of, you know, why we are looking at this at all, this is, these are the requirements, this is the area we're talking about.
In that quarter, yeah, that'd be.
The procedure, just explain why we chose this approach, and that, and also that we'll be discussing it more with the community, because we don't wanna show up to, you know.
Well, we're just, we're really very lucky, we have this unit already all built in that we did that, and that they'll accept it, I want to use, that's, that's, that's a clean win.
We, we do have to, we do have to change the going on, and, you know, if the people who live on those properties don't like the idea of that, then we may have to come up with another approach, but we have to just.
I don't know that the people, but it's mostly rentals over there, so.
The other half are owners, right, because Edgewood is rental, Martin's Landing.
Right, right, that's what I meant, and I was more concerned about Edgewood, I don't know that the people, um, that they would care, I mean, you know.
Um, i- if, if I could, uh, I, I think it's important to build into this the idea that, you know, this is something that's happening. Our options are limited in terms of pushback.
Right, right.
And it seems like our idea from the very beginning was going to the school committee and saying, hey, you guys are on the ones touching the nerve of the town, and if this becomes a school issue, then, you know, it could, the whole thing could fall apart. Um, you know, but I think it's important to kind of stress when we have this, this meeting with them, that this is the way the state's going, and our options, if we say no, are limited. So it's, uh, open ears to suggestions, but, you know, there's a certain kind of like reality that everybody has to face, I would assume.
Well, we want their support, you know, hopefully, we, we're working to get their support in it, so if they, if we go to town meeting with this, and the school department gets up and says, we support this, that would go a long way.
I, yeah, no, that's a thing that makes total sense to me, to me, I just think that, like, part of our messaging should be also how, you know, how, it, it almost feels like a frustrating thing that we have to be the ones to kind of say to the town, like, look, this is what the state's telling us, this is what we have to do. There's limited ways we can push back, we found a great convenient kind of way to do it, that minimizes what we perceive to be the town's apprehensions of what could otherwise be the state's interpretation of all this, um, but just, I mean, there, there does need to be, I think, a degree of matter of fact of, hey, this is what we have to do, so unless you guys have something tangible to give us back in terms of alternatives, please don't just, you know, stonewall it, because you're gonna push us into a corner that's gonna waste town resources trying to fight with the state.
Any of those are really good points, and, and, and well put, and I, I will definitely work that into the presentation, just the idea that this is, you know, legislation that's been passed, and our ability to opt out is, you know, doesn't, we don't have any, you know, we're doing it, so, um. Okay.
Well, also too, I mean, I, just, just to be on the record with this, I mean, there was some talk in previous, you know, discussion on this topic about why, why this shouldn't apply to our town. I can tell you guys from my family experience that we moved from North Andover to North Reading specifically for the proximity to the Reading MBTA station. So we are an MBTA community, it's a reality, there's a lot of community, there's a lot of people and families in our community where it doesn't apply to them, but there's a lot that it does. And I just, I don't want us to be a community that's part of the problem, let's be part of the solution, and we need to make sure that we bring other people to the table on that.
But I think Jeremiah raises a good, because we've seen kind of Jeff here, um, trying to peel back the, the layers to understand the genesis of it, so I think it'd be good, because we've been trying to do that, and I'm not sure if we ever got an answer of like, when this happened, nineteen seventy-four, did you?
That's true, I was gonna mention a blast meeting, and I, I knew that because Jeff had raised those questions, I emailed him just to say, I put this in there, I'll, your updates, I didn't have a, like, presentation about it, but I wrote up the whole history of, like, MBTA.
That's, I gotta, I gotta read that, and I apologize, send it to me, but, um, I think that's important that we go that with them, because, just say, like, if you recall, at the last town meeting, there was a few people that got up, it's, it's like, why are we still doing this? I mean, there's definite genuine, like, why are we doing this?
We pay, we pay, all, yeah, all that kind of stuff. Thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And that's all Jermaine, but I just think it is important, like, just say, this is how it happened, we were one, we had service, we voted for whatever the, I'll read it, and I apologize that it happened, but that'll be good to go over with them, to, to Jeremiah's point, that we are a community, and we, this is coming, you know, so that covers kind of all the bases, you know, so it covers the beginning, the middle, and the end, yeah.
And we, and we're basically, I mean, we, we, we could not comply, however, the, the damage to us would be great, because we would take away some of our funding for grants and things like that, so it's not like we couldn't say no, but the, but the cost of saying no is high.
Well, actually, we thought we could say no, and the cost would just be grants, but actually, the attorney general's office put out a statement a few months ago saying, this is mandatory.
Yeah, it said mandatory, it's not, you know, it's not just funding.
Yeah, so the whole housing thing is, the whole housing thing.
I printed that out, we can read that, because it sounds pretty definite, Jeremiah's an attorney, not me, but.
This is what I'm trying to say, this is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, we'll let Jeremiah read that one. Wear the wig too, when you go, alright, the whole bar, I want the robe and everything, and baby, with, with a wig and a robe.
Getting a little far afield here, I don't know.
Public meeting, gotta have fun.
Yeah, so I, so, um, yeah, we just have to make, yeah, if they realize that this is gonna happen, and we can, give them to support us at the town meeting, well, because they're just, because we don't wanna fight with this, you know.
So one of the things that we talked about doing following that school committee meeting was planning a couple of community meetings, um, we had talked about September twelfth and twenty-sixth as being possible dates to do that, just advertising it to the wider community to, to give a presentation and to say, this is what's gonna be proposed at, you know, June town meeting and why. Um, are those dates that we still think we should be aiming for? I can, I would like to make sure that the word gets out and that will not about.
I think, yeah, you kind of have, September, right, so you gotta plug those in, right?
Well, so we're, I think we have decided that we're not going for the October.
Oh, okay, we're not.
We're doing the June.
God, okay.
So, that's really, but.
Okay.
Well, we have enough time, we have, what do we have, until the end of next year or something?
We do, at the end.
Okay, sorry.
So, yeah, so, so, uh, yeah, so we, so, I don't.
It's a problem.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be that contentious, I think, is, once people understand that, you know, first of all, I mean, we have to do it, because we got no choice.
I don't think it will be contentious either, but I think we have to explain it to people before town meeting.
Yeah.
So we've really just gotta make sure people understand it, and don't just show up to town meeting and say, what is this?
Well, well, town, you know, it, it, the most important thing you can do is to get, get the boards to come and support it, if you have all the boards to support this, that, that'd be good, because there were a lot of people that come to town meeting that don't understand, and that will, will never have had the opportunity to read this or know anything about it, and they're gonna have to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, what are we doing? You know, so, so you might as well anticipate having to do a fairly detailed explanation at town meeting.
Yes.
Uh, however, so the important thing, though, ahead of time, and this is true of any of them, any initiative they could put forward, you need to get all the town boards on the same page, because, you know, because of the, you know, one of the other boards gets up and says, well, I don't know, you know, that's, 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 that's it. So as long as everybody understands it, we get everybody on board, there goes smoothly.
Do we still want to forget those two dates?
No, why not?
Okay, yeah, might as well, um, we'll get something in the paper, we'll just hold it out.
It's like everything else, the more people that are knowledgeable about it, the easier it's gonna be to work with.
Get the word out as much as we can.
That's always been the case, uh, but, but you're not gonna get, you know, you're gonna get two or three hundred people at town meeting, and you're not gonna get that many people in this room.
Okay, I think we should also, um, maybe just send them to the select board, and they know about it only because we've talked about it at their meetings before, but I think that it would be nice to give them a presentation and just to say, this is the approach we're looking at.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I think that's, I think it's actually a, should be a requirement for us, because, because again, they, they need to say at town meeting, oh yeah, we know all about this, we support it, it's good.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do pipe in now, and I'm sorry, but, um, the transcript doesn't seem like it has a whole lot to write about lately in the paper, and I'm, I'm wondering if maybe you did, like, a little story.
Yeah, that's a good idea, you know, I know that Mike meets with Maureen weekly, so I can talk with him about getting her, like, you know, press release and make that conversation, just so that she.
Just not give her all the description of what's, what it's all about.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Well, if, if I may, if I may, um, I, I think that, you know, and it's, as, as an attorney, I almost think, like, you know, we should lean on the attorneys to tell the, the rest of the town and the boards and everybody, uh, especially if we could work with Maureen, getting this kind of message out, is that this is a requirement, this isn't the, the CPC saying, let's do this, this isn't the select board saying, let's do this, this is a requirement that has been vetted by town council, he's confirming, like, yeah, we, we just gotta do it. I think that that should be the first step forward in any kind of communication we put out there, of, this is not like something that we can just say no to based on objective legal advice. Um, but here is all the ways the town is looking to kind of manage it and mitigate it, because the thing I would wanna head off is, you know, I, 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 the, I think it was, uh, Middleborough or Marlborough, one of the other towns that were challenged this, where it just, the town is just kind of like, well, we're gonna say no to it, and let the consequences be damned. Um, I think it's, it's, it's best if we can get, not necessarily the CPC being the one saying, this is what we have to do, but the, the other board circling around the town council saying, this is what we have to do, and everybody finding a solution to it. I think it takes the onus off of us of being the one of a, you know, we're gonna vote against this, because we just don't wanna do it, and kind of puts it on the others, that you have to communicate this to your own constituency for us to avoid a problem here.
But there's also, there's also the, um, you have, there, there are people who are, any activists that, that are interested in, in the fact that this is all about housing, for people who can't afford it, about getting affordable housing to the state, that's what it's all about. So we don't wanna put ourselves as, try to, you know, get out of heaven to do anything, you know, and.
No, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, if, if anything, it's the opposite to me, it's the lean, we should lean on the state. You know, we don't need to explain this other than, we're part of Massachusetts, this is what the state's doing, it's a, it's, it is what it is. Um, and, and here's what we can do to try to build it into the fabric of our town planning, and we've already anticipated this, that's why we have a good solution to it all, so it's nothing anybody should panic about, but at the same time, let's not waste any time trying to fight the narrative, let's not try to fight the realities. And we live in an age right now where people want to pretend that the sky isn't blue, and, and let's avoid all that by just bringing in impartial people who say, hey, everybody in the town boards, you're all part of this decision-making process. Uh, you know, we're the objective people telling you this is the reality, mitigate the damages, and that's the best you're gonna do, or, or embrace the positives out of it, God forbid, God forbid.
Yeah. Okay, good, now I think that's a, you know, a good way to frame it. Um, okay, so I'll be working on the presentation, um, for the twenty ninth, which actually will be the next time that we are all meeting, um, because we don't have a meeting before then, um, but I can chat the presentation into the shared file before then, because I work on it. Um, I guess moving on to another update or more of a question, um, Shale Lane and their street tree placement, it came to our attention recently that somehow, when the Shale Lane subdivision plans were approved, um, we just didn't notice that the street trees are shown in the grass strip instead of behind the redway, which they're supposed to be in our regulations. Um, now, I, I called Dave Murray. Um, now, I I called David Murray to discuss that with him. He said, I don't care where I put the trees, you just tell me where to put them. Um. I I kind of think that that's something that can just be handled as a field change. I mean, it is in our regulations. It's just not a made approved plan. I just wanted to bring this up with you to be sure that you were in agreement too. I don't remember any special reason why they would have been.
So there are any S plans to back from there or?
No, they're in the tree line, so they, I mean, and they're in the sidewalk in the street.
Which we don't do anymore.
We don't do it anymore because they get, take care of the sidewalks, they put them in people's yards.
Good.
Yeah, so actually, um, Chris Dammian called me and he was like, so I was chatting with, you know, Dave Murray not long ago, and it sounds to me like he's planning on putting the street trees in the grass strip, like, please tell me that's not true. And I was like, oh, that doesn't sound right. So I looked into it and I realized why he didn't think that.
Well, you should drive down your way, drive if you have anything bigger than a small car, you're gonna get your roof ripped off.
Those beautiful cherry trees.
They gotta cut back.
Yeah, that was true. Yeah, they're starting to really, you know.
Yeah, so I don't know clouds that low, but I see pieces of truck at the time. I mean, they really need to be, they need to be trimmed back.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And 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 I know a couple of the, a couple of places where they actually have gone and done a lot of trimming on, you know, to get them to, you know. They, to make them so you can drive down that way without.
I know, or walk on the sidewalks right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I even, even at my own house, I have to keep going up there and trim the trees back, but they reach out over the sidewalk.
Okay, so I'll let him know um behind the right way for the subdivision regulations. Yeah, okay. Great. And then my last thing I just wanted to confirm, um. Our September fifth meeting is our next regular CPC meeting. I just wanted to make sure everyone had it on their radar and they have to be here because we will need to vote to. Either approve, deny, or extend the deadline for the Anthony Road subdivision, um, because we currently, later that week have that as our deadline. So we have to make sure we have a forum here that night. And then the other reason is, um, we've advertised a street acceptance hearing for Eaton Circle. Which we only need three people for, but I just wanted to make sure we would at least have a forum that night.
Okay.
So.
Well, it being after eight o'clock, I suppose we could do the sixty six Winter Street.
Alright, you ready to do that?
You have the voting?
I do. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to continue the public hearing for sixty six Winter Street until September fifth, two thousand twenty three at eight P M.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Jeremiah. Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Um, we have a motion to second, all in favor of Jeremiah?
Aye.
And myself, aye, David.
Aye.
I control three in favor, no opposed. Um, and that is extended.
This one's eight fifteen?
Yeah.
Not too bad. Maybe maybe six, maybe five.
Yes.
Any, any CBA?
I'm no CBA. No CBA this time? CBA?
Oh, CBA?
It's, if if anything, it's, you covered them on the last meeting and I don't think they have another meeting until maybe, is it Thursday? Do you have any?
Uh, I don't remember. I thought they, did they not have that meeting already? I think, my, no, I thought it was maybe the eleventh?
Oh. After our seven twenty?
I didn't see any CBA.
No, 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 we don't have any for this time.
Yeah, no, there's no this time, but I thought, I don't want to show meetings like earlier ahead.
That's the application.
Oh, okay. But no, we just give them till a month, because they only need a month. So we don't usually get them every meeting, we get them every other.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I had, um.
So when do you have to go? When do you have to go to the venue? Maybe tomorrow, because. It's a long story, but we live in town, uh, we're called. We're the ferry, which. By, we used to do everything through fire, fire bombs.
So you gotta take a barge, by the way, and then sell it, they'll let you go underneath.
No. I went out, the the product goes on commercial boats.
It is the barge in the call.
Oh, okay.
I think, yeah, the barge, that's the old, right, and it's old and so, you know, it's safe for as far as that, yeah, personally, under the the whole.
I used to do Block Island.
Yeah.
Isn't there, we have a china, and I'd show up, and I'd show up along with that, and they put. Uh, two gases and candles on a propane truck and the.
Oh, boy.
And I was, and and the only people on the, the only people were the drivers.
Yeah.
The only people on the boat were the drivers and the people. And they, I used to tell them, you know, if everything goes bad, you guys will make a big, but I'll make it great.
That's true.
I actually got to know the guy in the engine. I used to go out and hang out with the guy in the engine room and play with the motors, I love people.
Play also.
I wouldn't, because I just, I would go, you know, put the lunch, put all the gear on, just like, go down there and hang out.
And the venues, well, that was Block Island, but the venue is the same thing, so fun, such a good.
But that guy that was in the engine room was also a reenactor, so he had a license. So he, I ran into him at State Department Office reviewing his licenses, you know? So I get that, I'm pretty sure, there's like many years I did all the jobs out there, but. Had to be a headache.
Yeah, the travel, the logistics.
No, um, is it more of the whole, the whole way they. The whole way they did things out there, they don't, you know. They would, they didn't care, they would not, um, what happens only on the state around and care what.
I would think it would, the logistics too would kind of dissuade.
Well, no, it wasn't bad. I got to be a regular thing.
Yeah.
Point to get on the, you know, get on the thing, so they, they, they'd be over there, we, they drop soft. We'd go deliver all the products and all that stuff and then. And the tank truck would go grab this fuel and the propane tanks would go grab their propane and then we'd all go back empty, you know, back. Worse, yeah, well, you know. Also, the costs were, you know. This whole industry costs, getting. My insurance costs.
Yeah, but imagine.
It's almost twenty five percent of the whole thing, you know, quarter rather dollar I get.
Is the insurance.
Yeah. Big.
Insurance in general, everything.
I can blame them, like, well, you know, it's pretty hard to, we should have, but they're exposed to government virus. Well, you know, probably there's only two main carriers in the whole world that will insure, but then fire.
Who are they?
Boise London, AIG.
That you have AIG?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But we have all the different companies, this Everest and Somerset and, you know, there are all these different companies, but when the buyer comes in. AIG.
Where it goes to.
Yeah.
Well, they must be making money.
Well, I think the problem is there's so much natural disaster, but so many things that that pan out that they just. Uh, arbitrarney.
Yeah.
Uh, started raising the rates for everybody to try to recover. And they weren't getting any money on investments.
Right.
But they probably are now, now that interest rates are up.
Right, sure.
You know, they make some money on their money, although maybe they've, maybe they've. Hopefully that might mitigate some insurance costs, but I think it's just gonna be more and more every year. Well, maybe when we get to the point where they take half the money out of you.
Yeah, when you're fifty cents on the dollar, insurance, oh boy. That was different health.
We just have some folks showing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's pretty, uh, pretty crazy, so. That's one of the reasons why rent competitive went under, I can tell you. See, when you do your insurance, you say, how much money can you make this year? How much money, how much business are you gonna do? Could you take every single dollar, every single dollar is made or, I don't care.
That sounds like a spam thing, I don't buy it.
No, it's actually actively creative to try to maximize as much as you can.
Right.
Because they need to block. I would say. I, I don't have to pay you for the housing. I have to give you a reimbursement check, money I spent on their cap.
Right.
So that doesn't, that's not income.
Yeah.
That was having an account.
So I, I haven't, I haven't.
It's a construction too, they're like that too, and just every dime you make is owes onto you.
Yeah.
General liability, yeah.
So they, um. So they, so so in the beginning, you say, well, no, I, they know I'm gonna probably be.
But then it would be, it's not, but I'm gonna only tell them this much.
And then it won't cost you that, but then, you know, you have. Another million, twenty five thousand, a little over sixteen thousand, before you know it.
You're back up to twenty five cents on the dollar.
Because I have that comp policy in all the different states. So everybody's got their own gig.
Right. Do you have some help easy under that, or do you, do you put those up where you're seeing?
Yeah, I have a couple of, um.
Different.
The different, the different states do it differently.
Why don't you just separate, just log into your account now, see if there's anything else.
So, uh.
So, um, so I should not, I'll just.
I would just log on to your account and see if there's something there.
Well, you have an insurance, so. Uh, we, we, I mean, they charge me like five thousand dollars a year just for one truck.
Like having a teenager.
Yeah. So you got a couple, that's why I rent all the trucks, because I own two, but I. Rent the rest because.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you had ten trucks, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars just to put them on the road. I tend to say, excited. But I owned a new truck in nineteen twenty, uh. Twenty, beginning of twenty twenty two, I ordered one truck.
Okay, it sounds.
The big white one? Big boys?
Yeah, so, well, actually, it's white, black truck.
Oh, I've seen that one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a ten four fifty.
Yeah.
I ordered another one.
The thing that I came back up and then, you can't, you can't really, we haven't started building your truck yet, it's been a year now, over a year.
One year and a half on it, and they're like, uh. And I talked to my, the sale, I said, we, we keep saying you haven't, you know. He said, yeah, I know, I said, he said, I, I'm just saying, no, I put an order in for you, for twenty four.
That circus that.
But I don't think there is, I am canceling that order on the issue, but I wanted to get the twenty four order in ahead of time, so.
Be good. What do we get? We get both and close up fourteen?
Yeah, we, I did, um, the truck I got, it's a two thousand eight, one nine. And of course, it was always the new truck, and then one day I'm like. Wait a minute, this is fifteen years old. Yeah, eighty thousand pounds, fifteen years.
That's not bad.
No, they don't go that far.
Not bad at all.
Five thousand pounds a year.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm like, when is this even a new truck anymore? Fifteen years old, thirteen.
If you, well, we get in fifteen, so.
Alright. It being eight fifteen. Um. Who will open the continued public hearing for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty six R April Street? Um, they have requested a continuance, and so um we have a motion for that. Um. Do we, do, um. No, we're just gonna, we'll just do the continuance, right?
I was planning on giving a quick update, but I think because um we don't have all the members tonight, we risk losing um Mr. Carroll for purposes of voting.
Yeah.
If we give a presentation, so um. Because we're not all in attendance, I think it's better, I mean, not give.
Not give, but not wait, yeah, we'll wait till we get it, we get it, because it's just not, just, just not right to, you know. We need everybody to be on board so that they know what's going on, so I agree. So we'll just do the uh continuance. And then at the next meeting, we'll try to get everybody there and get it to work, so. Okay, Dave, if you would.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I just, I put eight thirty, I don't know if you want to do eight fifteen again. It's like a half hour, you know, sixty six month street and that age, so it's up to you, you might change the time.
So continue, what, eight fifteen on that?
Oh, it does.
Oh, for the.
No, for the next one, we have a motion.
I'm gonna put it eight fifteen.
Eighteen is better, that way we won't have to wait so long if nobody, if there is another.
Yeah, okay, noted. Mister Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to continue the public hearing for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty six R April Street. Until September fifth, two thousand twenty three at eight fifteen.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing out all in favor, please say aye. I'll do roll call vote. Um, Jeremiah?
Aye.
Myself, aye, and David.
Aye.
And so the record shows three in favor, no opposed. And they're continued until September fifth. And thank you all, and for those who are listening, um. Um, we're doing the best we can to get this, get this thing all put together and get them to show up, but currently there are. Issues that they're still dealing with, and there'll be an update on September fifth, one way or the other, so. Thank you very much. Hey. Good, that's all right. Uh, well, uh, did you want to talk about town meeting warrants or anything?
I was going back on there in case we wanted to discuss anything further, but I think we had decided at the last meeting that, um, due to the timing of. You know, discussions with the community that it didn't make sense to try to go for the October town meeting for MBTA communities, but it's due June.
Right, right.
And also that I would be submitting a warrant article for um Seventh St Teresa Street, um, for the um. Affordable housing overlay district for, uh, you know, to give.
For, for?
Uh, for the affordable housing overlay district, um, Seventh St Teresa's to give.
Oh, okay, right, right, okay.
The town on right to dispose of the property.
Really? Okay, alright.
Um, and then as far as other things, AD were not uh doing, and then there was one other thing that we had been discussing, discussing, but, um. Oh, no, we are doing, and it's the street acceptance for Eaton Circle.
Right. Okay. Okay, um, I guess that's all we have, and.
That's all we go.
I imagine we can adjourn.
See you on the venue.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, see you.
No problem.
Yeah.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Nate, so.
Yeah.